I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town Council meeting Monday, September 11th, 2023, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chamber. The agenda, one, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Agenda item number two, roll call. Madam Secretary?
Counselor Lazo.
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 Can't hear you.
Sorry. Counselor, Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Adams.
Excuse.
Counselor Chenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Excuse.
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
We have a call. Moving on to agenda item number three, the swearing in of the new town manager, John D. Daniels Jr. I mean, sorry. John D. Jovan Jr. Madam Clerk?
Surprise.
Thank you, Captain.
Do you, John D. Jovan Jr., solemnly swear to form all duties incumbent of you as the town manager for the town of Southbridge faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the charter and bylaws of the town of Southbridge? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you. I just need you to sign. And I also have to give you the go for me and Lauren. So if you would just sign right there.
So I'll have a more prepared remarks under the town manager's announcements of things that are going on, but at this time I just want to thank the Town Council for this opportunity to serve the town of Southbridge, and especially I'd like to thank all my family members that are here tonight in support and to be here at this occasion. It is a proud moment. My family has had a long history in the town of Southbridge, as I've articulated before, and just happy to serve, and thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you.
I'm going to allow any councilors to have a comment. The only thing I'd like to say is I commend Jack Jovan for putting his name in, for wanting to be the town manager. He has a tremendous history in Southbridge, his family, his ancestors, and I think going forward, there's going to be something new. In most cases, we've always hired somebody from out of town. We now have a local gentleman qualified and willing to serve the town of Southbridge. I'm excited, and I think that my fellow councilors share the excitement, but most of all, the people of Southbridge in walking on the streets and dealing with department heads and various people in the town hall and employees, they're excited. So I think working together, council and the manager and the department heads and staff, I think we've had a, we're off to a good start, but as I told my good friend, Mr. Jovan, all honeymoons do come to an end, and he's the kind of gentleman that, he shows up every day and gives 110%, and that's why he is here. Thank you. Any councilors would like to comment? Counselor Dow?
I want to say congratulations. We're excited to have you back up in here, and I think the town of Southbridge and the residents proud to have you be the leader for the town of Southbridge, and hopefully we can do a lot of different in town and change things and move forward faster than in the past. Thank you.
Counselor Chenier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to congratulate Jack for getting this appointment, and I look forward to working with him for the next three years and longer, hopefully. He's started already, and he's a shaker and a mover in the short time that he's been here, and again, hearing the people out in the street, they're happy that we have a local candidate and that somebody's going to feel the pain like they do. So again, I thank you very much and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, moving on to agenda item number four, consider and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of A. We're going to go one at a time because there has to be one abstention. Monday, July 24th, 2023, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chenier, seconded by Daniels. Any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes? Vice Chair, Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. In the roll call on this meeting, it says Marquetti excused. I was at the meeting. It may have been Adams that was excused.
Oh, was that what it was? Well, it passed away.
And that's all. Thank you.
Any further additions, corrections, or deletions? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present on July 24th minutes. Moving on to B, Monday, August 7th, 2023, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion by Counselor Chenier, seconded by Counselor Dow. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of the meeting? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to C, Monday, August 21st, 2023, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chenier, Counselor Chenier, seconded by Counselor Dow. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of the meeting? If none, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to subcommittee, agenda item number five, Department of Public Works. Counselor Adams is not here, which is no report at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
He does have a meeting posted for September 18th, 2023, and I believe that one is at 6:00 PM.
September 18th, 6:00 PM. DPW, moving on to Education and Services, Counselor Rivas.
No report at this time. We are scheduling a meeting for Wednesday, September 20th, at 7:00 PM. That'll be posted.
Moving on to General Gov, Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are looking to have a meeting after DPW on Monday, the 18th, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Moving on to Planning and Development, Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have no report this evening, and there's no meeting scheduled at this time.
Moving on to Protections versus Property, Counselor Chenier.
Mr. Chairman, no meeting minutes, and we have a meeting scheduled for, it was originally scheduled for September 18th, but it conflicted with the other two meetings, so we're going to be holding it September 19th, and the manager's office will get an agenda out. It'll be at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Moving on to Chairman's announcements, agenda item number six, it's a couple items. First of all, before I go into it, I would just like to say we're going to have a moment of silence in remembering 9/11. I'd like to ask everybody, all the heads. Thank you. I'd just like to comment on the remembering 9/11. It was a trying time for the country, it was a trying time for the communities, but remembering is the most important thing, is not to forget your history, whether it be a sword on a flag, a statue at the Rotary, a monument. We must remember our history so we do not repeat the same mistakes, and that's why when we talk about remembering the losses that day, the distress on the services that day and what happened to the fire police and all the emergency services. I went to Ground Zero back then, and I was right at the base of the building and the viewing stand, and I've got to tell you, it's something I've never seen in my lifetime, and the air was something I've never breathed, and I have to tell you that it's one of those things, you're never going to forget where you were when the planes hit the towers, and you'll never forget 9/11. So thank you very much for being here for the moment of silence. Moving on to, let's see, I'm going to go with, I have a, I'd just like to say thank you very much to the Fire Department on an excellent golf tournament that they put together. We golfed in it, it was a record number, I thought, for the Fire Department at their tournament. Congratulations to all the firefighters who put it on. Moving on to Meals on Wheels. There seems to be a misunderstanding of what was said at the last meeting. Nobody's throwing the Tri-Valley Elder Services Meals on Wheels on the street. The way it is going to work and the way it is working, we would like to keep them in town. Although the elderly center, they want to put more programming and utilize the space more for our elders, that doesn't mean that we are just throwing them out. I think what happens is there's 30 days to research another location, and I've talked to certain people in the school department, looking for space in the Cold Trade Building. I know the veterans group have room, they use rooms in there. I didn't know if there was more. There was calls to local churches that have kitchens to see if the Meals on Wheels could work out of one of the churches. So we're constantly working, and I haven't heard if they found anything yet outside of on their own, but what I'd like to say is, if they don't find anything, this council's going to vote a 30-day extension. A 30-day extension to continue working out of our community center. I think there's a misunderstanding about what happened at the last meeting, and the negative started charging around, and people were all upset, how could you do this? We didn't do anything but try to expand our programming for our own elders in Southbridge. At the same time, we want to accommodate, and I know that Town Manager Jovan and I have spoke about it, we're going to constantly be looking for another location, and I am a very selfish person about Southbridge. I have a Southbridge-first agenda with this administration, and I think we need to keep elder services in Tri-Valley Meals on Wheels in Southbridge. So we're going to work on it, and as I talked with Counselor Adams, if we need one extension, two extensions, whatever it takes to make sure that the Meals on Wheels continues to service its elders, at the same time, we're going to try and work in a revitalization of our own elderly center. Moving on to, we have on August 16th, we're going to have a meet and greet at 6 o'clock at the Italian Club on North Street for our new town manager.
September 16th.
I'm sorry.
September 16th.
Yep. September 16th, I have too many dates here. On September 16th, a meet and greet for Jack Jovan, the town manager, 6 o'clock at the Italian Club. We are going to put an all-staff out, we are going to try and get as many people to meet the new town manager, even if you already know him. Come, we're going to have hors d'oeuvres, we're going to have a social where you get to meet the manager along with some of the councilors that will be there, and discuss the future of Southbridge, what your priorities are, and just get to know the town manager inside out. He's that kind of guy, he's built for this job, and I'm looking forward to the meet and greet on the 16th, 6:00 PM at the Italian Club. That's all I have. Moving on to Town Manager's announcements. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. All right, just a number of updates. First off, over the past week, the town received some sad news about one of our firefighter's children, and just want to put this out because the Fire Department is working with the family in regards to this young individual. Giuseppe Struppa. Giuseppe is the son, 10-year-old son of Southbridge Fire Department member Mike Struppa, firefighter, paramedic. He's also serves as a Sturbridge Veterans Officer and retired U.S. Army 10th Mountain Division Combat Veteran. So to those that served during the period of 9/11, he is one of those that have served our country and served it well, as well as our community. His mom is a visual arts teacher with the Uxbridge Public Schools. Approximately a week or so ago, Giuseppe began feeling ill. It was discovered that he had a tumor in his brain stem and underwent surgery to try and remove the tumor. He's currently recovering at Boston Children's Hospital, where he will continue to undergo treatment and rehabilitation. The prognosis, we have to pray for the best for this young individual and support for the family. I have offered to, the Fire Department has stepped up, and I'm working with them and their union to come up with a plan to assist the firefighter so he doesn't have to worry about his shifts here while he works. The outlook is, I'll just leave it, the family is devastated, and we'll work with that family, and the Fire Department has a fund. If you go to their page, any parent shouldn't have to go through that, and it's just having grandkids and kids, it's tough, so. Any support you could do and prayers would be gratefully appreciated. And we got some ongoing things, so I've been here two weeks as the manager, however, I'm no stranger to the ongoings of what the town has facing it and together building the plan of where we want to go as a community. So with that, over the last two weeks, we received several resignations in the Council of Agen, Susan Prue, Kathleen Grenier, and Carol Teneos. I want to thank them for their service to the town, wish them the best of luck in their future. We have received two interest forms, and those will be sent to the subcommittees next week for appointment to fill those positions, and then to the Town Council on the September 25th meeting. In regards to the fire station project, I did formally step down as the chair of the Fire Station Building Committee and submitted that resignation to the town clerk's office. Over the last two weeks, we had a meeting to update the committee. We're at 90% design. We have had the estimates on that 90% design. Inflation continues to affect this project, we're all aware of inflation and the costs. We are fortunate that we believe we will be receiving 50,000 in state funds towards the relocation and demo cost. Those were through the efforts of the state representative and state senate. We have a $2.5 million appropriation sitting in the federal government sponsored by Congressman Nail, and we're awaiting that appropriation. We have decided to continue with the bid documents to completion, to be prepared to go out to bid, and we're going to evaluate what the timing of that bid process will be because it is all dependent on the funding. Again, due to the inflationary cost and also the cost of acquisition of properties, our budget is not to the point where we need to be to feel comfortable going out to bid. If we do receive the $2.5 million, then that will assist us greatly in making sure that we can go out to bid. I appreciate Counselor Marquetti being in on the call today and discussing some of the options on what we're going to do with that. I have asked the, Deputy Chief Hewlett will be assuming the chairmanship of the Fire Station Building Committee, and as such, I've asked that he and our owners' project manager prepare a presentation to come before council in the next month or so to provide an update to everyone so that we know where we're at. At the last meeting, council meeting, that I had an opportunity to be at, Counselor Marquetti had requested several updates on grants. I've asked Ms. Dean to provide a status of those grants, and she will provide an update at the September 25th meeting. One of those grants was a RACE grant for Hamilton Street Reconstruction, a $9.9 million grant. I had the opportunity to sit with Ms. Dean in a debrief with Washington. We got in that project, and when she briefs you, I think you'll be impressed in the fact that even though we didn't get the grant, that we, what level we moved to in the federal government for possible funding. Counselor Lazo stated on the Meals on Wheels, I know he had been working on space in town. I have been in communication along with Counselor Rivas with Tri-Valley. They have indicated that they have identified three possible locations in the area. I've communicated with Lisa Prince of Tri-Valley and have a meeting scheduled with her tomorrow at 2:30 PM. I did assure her, as Counselor Lazo said, that even if they don't find the space this month, that we will work with them and stay in place and work through a transition plan with them. So I have conveyed that message on behalf of the council and the town, that we are working with them on the transition. I had sent an email out about two weeks ago. We got a delegate for the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. I will get, Counselor Daniel has responded that he would be willing to sit on that panel. I will have that as a formal motion on the September 25th meeting to have him appointed as a delegate. However, tomorrow, there is a meeting with the Central Mass Municipal Planning Organization in regards to, on the 14th at 5:30 PM, in which they are, it's an information and member selection meeting through Zoom on the 14th at 5:30 PM. The council or select board needs to choose one member to attend that important meeting. So if it's okay, I would ask that the council at least allow Counselor Daniel to attend that meeting as our town representative. That was the organization that Counselor Adams had mentioned. We were notified about the TIP project in Peril, so it's important that we have a member in that. If that's okay, I would ask that he attend that. In regards to the questions we got in the Building Department on specifically Mill Street and Sacred Heart Church, I did meet with Mike Julian today. He had been on, due to the vacation schedule and everything, he just got back from vacation. We did have a conversation. We will meet to develop a plan of action moving forward on that and present that to council at a near date. McGann Field, as you know, the press box had been destroyed by fire. That is an ongoing project. We are working with the project manager in regards to that. They are waiting on the demo permit. We did have a meeting with the Softball Association in regards to finished products for that building, and that is in process, and we will be getting a design update on that project, as well as the lighting project is ongoing. In regards to staffing, as you're aware, that on day one, or as you are aware, we are facing several challenges with no assessor, treasure collector on an interim basis. So in the next, next week, I will be bringing to the Town Council an interim candidate for the assessors department, a treasurer collective finance director, a human resources director, and we got to that in the next week. Also, I've been asked to seek the services of Robert Caprera again for our inspections department. I have communicated with Mr. Caprera, and he has a proposal that will become in the council as well for that, and he is back in the fold that he wishes to work with this council and this town manager. We do have struggles with our Department of Public Works as regards to staffing. I know Rich is here this evening. Rich and I have had many conversations about the direction of the DPW, and we will be working with Counselor Adams for the next DPW meeting to talk about the organization as DPW and how we may either look at that operation and develop plans to streamline and gather staff. It was unfortunate, we did have an interview with a candidate scheduled for this past week. That individual is a local neighboring town. His town that he currently works as a deputy director got wind of the fact that he was interviewing for another job, and they substantially upped his salary, nine weeks of vacation and a car, and likewise, he decided not to say. And that is the challenge that we have in recruiting individuals, not to this town, but every town has a staffing throughout the industry of not only municipalities but private sector as well. So we really have to work to think outside the box about how we're going to recruit and retain. I do have some thoughts that I'll bring to council next week about the assessors department and other departments. A citizen in regards to migrants, everybody's hearing about migrants in the area and in the town of Sturbridge. A citizen had approached us about what we're going to do in Southbridge, just to assure the community and the town. I have discussed this with the chiefs and the Building Department, and we will be working on our strategy to make sure that whatever we need to do, we'll have something in place. And I know Rhodes is the biggest issue. Thankfully for Rich and his department and the staffing, Ellis Road is nearing completion. He will be addressing Gulfwood Road next. There's been conversations about North and Mechanic Street, and I've worked with the DPW, and we'll bring an update at the next DPW meeting. And again, we are working on a plan to not only finish up this year but work into next year. And finally, and I know it's been a long window, but there's been a lot that has occurred in the last two weeks. While we do have a lot of challenges, I've had the opportunity to meet everyone here in the town hall, talk to them on a daily basis, walk around the town hall, and I want to thank everybody for their support in the first two weeks. We've really had some really great conversations about where we want to go and what our vision is, and how I as town manager can bring things to the table for them, to support them, so that we can operate in an efficient manner. I'd like to thank Matty, who's here tonight, who has been a valuable resource for me to assist in the department because I have no executive assistant, and there's times that the office has been closed, and everyone has pulled together to assist me. And I've just conveyed to everybody that as manager, I'll do my best with the council to support them, to put operations in place, and at the end of the day, like Counselor Lazo said, I am a taxpayer in the town of Southbridge as well, so no matter what we do, it's, the plan is what's best for Southbridge, what's best for our residents, and keeping the taxpayer in mind. And that will always be the forefront of what our processes that I will recommend to council. It's not all about always spending money, but it's spending it wisely and efficiently, but we do have a mission and a job that we have to do, and we will accomplish that. And as I've told everybody, failure is not an option. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Moving on to Citizens Forum, are there any citizens that would like to address the council on any issues that is not on the agenda tonight? State your name and address.
Good evening. Kevin Buckston, 149 Everett Street. Good evening, council. Congratulations, Town Manager Jovan. Jack is fine with you, thank you. Look forward to working with all my town government. I'm here tonight to talk about recruiting. I'm a member of the Trail Committee. We're looking, we're still looking for members to help participate on the Trail Committee. Our next meeting is September 14th at 6:30, oh, 7:00. And I'm also here to ask people who are interested in Conservation Commission. It's a bit more technical type of commission, but we'd love to have more citizen participation. You can look at, attend a few meetings, that would be great. Their next meeting is September 20th, and I think I've talked with somebody about the fact that you've been very successful in appointing your subcommittees and everything, and we are, Trail Committee is a lesser group, but we are still looking for people who have just a small available time. Thank you very much.
Any other citizens that would like to address the council? Mr. Zodos?
Hello. Hello, everybody.
Name and address.
Paul Zodos, 60 Charlton Street, Southbridge, Mass. Before I get into my stuff, you know, I live at the Quinabar Plaza, and talk about history, but Meals on Wheels used to be in that kitchen, and when it was in that kitchen, about 40 people used to eat, just go upstairs and eat. So the kitchen's been empty since then. Think about it. Write that down somewhere. You know, I don't know, I'm not representing anybody.
We're open for all suggestions from all citizens.
It's a great, it's a great place. I mean, you know, I remember when it was there, you know? Now, and also if you want to up the quality of the meals, like lobster, steak, tacos, we should think about that, not, you know, where they're going to be. Maybe we get Jeremy to cook for them, that would be nice too, if we could get a better chef. But anyway, I digress. I'm here to say thank you, congratulations to Jack, I think it's wonderful. Jack, when you went through the list of all the things that you have to do, it was so nice that we know that you already understand every single one of those topics. You know, we don't have to spend six months stopping you on the street and telling you these things are problems. Everyone that you said you knew. You knew the history of the problem, you got a couple ideas on the solution of them. We've never had that experience where the manager's sitting there and he knows more than us.
I don't know about that, but thank you.
No, 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 you know what the problems are. We don't have to, we don't have to spend the six months telling you what we think the problems are. You know what they are. You just told us what they were. You thought it was long, there's probably some more, but you got them, and I think that's great. So I'm only here, I was only, I'm only here to say, you know, good luck, I think this is going to work, I think it's great. We tried 10. We tried ten, I knew like about seven or eight managers, and I can't even remember who they were or what they did. You know, we know, we know you, and I think that's going to be, that's a real plus that we didn't have with any of them, you know. So what I wanted to bring to your attention tonight was the gazebo. I've taken it over kind of as my pet project. I keep it clean. I got the graffiti off. I've got the, I pick up all the bottles and the bubble gum and the stuff like that, but it does need some work. There's eight railings missing that they broke and took. I don't know whether it's for souvenirs, but the railing is going to give out pretty soon because all the posts are gone. I found two in the bushes, and I gave them to the rec person who does the concerts. And by the way, Mike does a great job on the concerts. The concerts were the best in years this year. This kid, Mike, we should, you know, keep him for next year. He did a really good job. All the concerts were really had good, good bands, and they did well, you know. So we'd like to see Mike come back, and we'd like to, the gazebo will be in good shape. So maybe after Autumn Fest, we could get some carpentry repair and some painting, just because then at Christmas, you know, we're going to decorate it for Christmas. We want it to look nice. And there's a lot of raw wood that won't make it through the winter. It's all exposed, and it's already rotting. Even the little cupola that you made, Mr. Lazo, in the back, it's there's some, the paint, the paint's gone, the wood's rotting, and that needs a little work because that that thing's really cute, and that's where everybody looks. And you must know who did the work. I don't, I'm not sure who who did the carpentry before, who painted it. Salisbury painted it, I read on that little plaque that has your name and Salisbury, but I don't know if there, I don't know who Salisbury painting is. But if nobody wants to paint it, I'll paint it. You know, so just get me to.
I'll do it with you.
Get to the painter, we'll just paint it. And some people at the Art Center said they'd help paint, too, if we, if that's going to be a big deal, you know. But I'd like to see it painted before the, before the winter, but after Autumn Fest. And don't forget, Autumn Fest, come on down. There'd be another place to meet and greet before the meet and greet. So we'd like to see you there, Jack. And again, good luck, good luck, and I wish Adams was here, but I don't know. And the groundskeepers doing a fabulous job on the, all the trees and the bushes and the park looks just absolutely gorgeous, so we got to maintain that quality with the grounds. But who who's really oversees that gazebo? I'm not sure. Is it D P W would do all that?
Rich does from D P W Director.
Good, good.
With all the rain that we're having, it's amazing that they can keep up the cemeteries and all of the lots. He does a great job of it.
They know that these things, they know, they really made it look good now, and they've trimmed the bushes perfect, and I can take pictures of them finally. And so I'm happy with all that, and they kind of know what's wrong. I just wanted to let you guys know, and maybe you could just blow the whistle, and we could get it painted before the winter. Other than that, I've got a million things, but we'll save that for another day. But good luck, guys. Good to see you. Good to see everybody. I know and love everybody up there. We know this manager like we know our brothers and sisters, so I think this is going to work out good. I came two weeks ago, but nobody was here. So I mean, anyway, I'm going to go home and watch, all right? Oh, make sure everybody watches the Pink Floyd band. It was the last band that played there. Get that on the air, because it was the best thing that's ever played on the common, even what I put. This Pink Floyd thing was out of this world. That's why Mike is good. And if you put Pink Floyd on before the town meeting and after the town meeting, people will watch. It's just a suggestion. All right, thank you, Ev. I made you laugh. Let's hear a big cheer for Jack. Hey, Jack. We love Jack.
State your name and address.
Carla de la Cruz Davila, twenty-four Ashland Ave. I just wanted to come up here to formally invite all of you and the community to the school committee meeting tomorrow at seven P M. Dr. Villar will be there, and he'll be discussing our school system, which is something we all agree on. So I would love to see all your faces there tomorrow while I'm sitting where you are. And that's it. Thank you.
Councils, I don't know how many can attend, but I will be attending the meeting tomorrow. Hope you're all there. Any other citizens would like to speak at this time? If not, moving on to presentations. We do not have any presentations tonight. Agenda item number ten, vote to approve the town manager's appointment of Lane Wondelia to the licorice board as a full-time board member effective immediately.
So moved. Second.
To the motion, the second discussion. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, Bruce Newland was a longtime member of the licorice licensing commission and unfortunately had stepped down this year. Lane Wondelia was the alternate member. And after some conversations in the town, in my office, they had thought that he would just automatically move up to the, be the full-time regular member. However, that is not the case. He would have to be appointed as the, from alternate member to full-time member. So we will elevate Lane to a full-time member and then seek another alternate. We had just filled that alternate position after they've been vacant for a number of years. So that is my recommendation.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question. Do the alternates, have they attended the meetings during this past year? Are they just?
Lane had just been appointed probably a month ago, so.
Okay.
To get a history of it, not enough data.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number eleven, vote to engage Edward J. Collins Center for public management to provide assistance in developing the curbside pickup enterprise fund and allow the town manager to sign all perpetual service agreement in the amount of twenty-five thousand two hundred. Very motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Shinja, second by Daniels. Discussion. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we all know, we have the curbside pick up enterprise fund that we have to work on to set up. This, our request for proposals had been sent out by former town manager, interim town manager Charlie Blanchard. We received the study. He has looked at it as well as I have. Our recommendation is to move forward with the Collins Institute. The other person that submitted a proposal was Donald Jacobs, who has provided other studies to the town of Southbridge. His proposal was thirty thousand dollars. This one is at twenty-five thousand two. However, price was not the sole point of why we're going to recommend to award to the Collins. We just felt that the team that they had in place had a lot of strengths to it. They have retired D P W directors that have been involved in the enterprise fund as well as their finance department. And I appreciate the fact that we're allowed to go right to council with this because time is of the essence. We need to make sure we have this established by at least March. So we are on a very tight timeline. I did provide the proposal with your packets, so that is my recommendation at this time.
Council Mike Eddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I think this is a great idea. We really need someone to come in, take a look, setting up the enterprise fund, how much it's going to cost the residents, what's their fees for the cost of curbside garbage collection. This isn't something that can just throw out there and start collecting. We have to really know all of our assets, all the liabilities, the cost of the program. So this is a great idea, and I fully intend to support it. I just want to point out that I don't think it's a traditional pay-as-you-throw curbside solid waste and recycling program that's in their overview. This is an enterprise, this is a flat fee, whereas I, I would rather have seen a pay-as-you-throw with a bag system that would help cut down on the cost of recycling, but we're not doing a pay-as-you-throw traditionally.
Right. So, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Mr. Blanchard, when he had looked at that, had picked up on that, and we, I did participate in the conversation, the teleconference with Mr. Blanchard and the Collins Center. They are aware that it is a flat fee. Charlie had said, because the council had also indicated at some point, we may want to do the play, that it really, that was just the semantics on the verbiage, but they are aware that it is a flat fee right now, and that we may look at pay, pay-as-you-throw as well. So that was picked up. So thank you. I forgot to mention that.
You're welcome. Thank you. That's all.
Counsel Shinja?
Just to follow through with that, Mr. Chairman, I thought the bid went out to look at pay-at-you-throw and one-set fee. To look at both, even though it was voted on that we go one-set fee, are they going to, are they going to look at both options?
They did say that they would. So we did have the conversation with that vendor that said it may, right now, it's a, a flat fee. However, if we look at also incorporating at some point the pay-as-you-throw. So when we meet with them, we will make sure we define those parameters on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other councils? If not, Mr. Buckston?
Thank you. Kevin Buckston, one forty-nine Everett Street. I'm glad to see this step being taken to start the enterprise, review the enterprise fund. Out of all my experience with town government, when you work on committees and boards, you, you never really have any one feather in your cap. And the ad hoc committee, the last, one of the last meetings Karen Harnoy participated in, she actually mentioned me by name and said Kevin has a good idea for putting the enterprise fund into place. I've, I've never had anybody give me a better compliment than she did for her years of service. The, I just need to state there are other things, twenty-one Ds, municipal liens on property for fines and, and non-payment, and stating the obvious. We're six months away from March, seven if you count the two half months. But it's, it's coming, and we really need Francine in the assessors office is still talking about the fact that the billing has not been established. So there's still a lot of pieces to this puzzle, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckston, for serving on those committees. I think the ad hoc committee did a fine job on it, and we're at the next step, and there are a lot of moving parts to the finance department along with the approach to this subject. Any other discussion? No discussion, all over favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number twelve, vote to allow the town manager to engage the services of Roselli, Clark and Associates, certified public accountants to provide year-end closing assistance as well as M A D O R year-ending financial reporting assistance as needed. Very motion? Motion by Dow?
Second.
Second by Shinja. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So coming aboard two weeks ago, and I have had these conversations with the chair and other counselors even before I started, is that our finance department is the most important department right now that we have to get a handle on, because without a clear understanding of our end-of-the-year status as well as moving into F Y twenty-four, the thought of doing any projects, road projects, anything in this town is severely limited. So with that, I've had conversations with colleagues in the industry that have worked here in the past about strategizing on financing and recruitment, and one of the individuals indicated that we should seek the assistance of an, of our accountant to assist in the year-end. And it's really no fault of our accountant, it's just the fact that she took over for a longtime individual that served in that position as an accountant, finance director. And for the last seven months, there's been no finance director to assist in the overall function of the finance department, along with interim treasure collectors and people moving in and out of that office. So with that being said, it was important for us to look at engaging a firm to assist in the end-of-the-year reporting so that we can get our free cash certified in a timely manner, as well as do the reporting not only for ourselves, but we also need to close out our books so that the school department can do their reporting to the Department of Ed by October first. So I know our accountant is working hard. I've been working with her regularly over the last two weeks and said, look, we will get you some support to assist in the end-of-the-year closeout. I had a long conversation with our auditor. Roselli, Clark and Associates also does our auditing, and it's important to state, this is not an audit, this is assistance and technical assistance to complete the end-of-the-year reporting. It was about a half-hour conversation about the finance, about the conversations that I've had with the chairman and the vice chairman and other counselors. So it is my recommendation that we engage the services on an as-needed basis. The rate is kind of high at a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, but I think that we cannot afford not to do it. It's a very important step that we have to take. I don't believe the number of hours is going to be substantial. It's just they would come in to initially look at where she's at, and then they would be available by phone if needed, or remote access to, to look at the technical aspects of what needs to be done. So it's just an adjunct to her to make sure that we do this accurately and on time.
Counsel Shinja?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Few meetings ago, we voted to do a, an audit, which is, I don't think this is what this is what the council intentions were. And it was an audit that was going to be through D O R or somebody, but I don't know if you ever were able to get the link to do that. This is closing the books out, but what concerns me is in the past, you know, errors that took place with insurance issues, for one thing. We paid multiple, a large sum of money for employees that were not employees here for the insurance, and we found out that it went back, could have gone back at least three years, in that our audit company back then never picked that up. It was the present accountant that made us aware of it at a, at a meeting one day. So my concerns are this isn't going to do that particular type of audit, or am I wrong?
Let me, let me take this one down, Mr. Town Manager. Yeah, we were, we didn't have a town manager seated, and I'm a big fan of, in some cases, since I got seated, I feel like I'm batting cleanup with a lot of issues. As Jack Jovan gets seated, he has a lot of issues. He's going to be batting cleanup. What we both have done, like sitting down privately and talking about the reconstruction of a lot of business and how we do business, and I think one of the vital parts of transforming a finance department is to be fully vetted on munis. No ledges, no spreadsheets. We need, we need to move in that direction. Now, how do we move in that direction? First of all, this is the first bite out of the apple, out of the elephant, as I say. When you eat an elephant, you got to eat it one bite at a time. This needs to happen to continue the flow of finance in the town of Southbridge. We've had issues with Mr. Pioppi, the bus company, and various other things. How to close out one year, transition into the next year is creating a fluid so the department gets it right on the numbers, and the school department can hit their dates. I got a feeling that when you see, this is the beginning stage of a bigger push to revamp our finance department on how we do business. Now, it's very easy to kick a dead horse. On that insurance issue, you're right. That person is no longer here that created that problem, and that person didn't come out of the finance department. It came out of H R. Now, moving forward, people are gone. We have to be the creators and the minds that straighten out how we do business in town of Southbridge. And I think Jack, Jack is the man for the job. I think this council is poised to tackle these issues, but it's can't happen all in one meeting. And I think what's going to happen is this is to put the fluid to the finance from one year to the next. Our town accountant works very hard. I think there's still a lot of stock in her. I think we need to support her and get support to transition how the department was run under Karen Harnoy's and how we wanted to run under the future finance director. And there are other pieces to the puzzle that have to come down the shoe, which are not ready right now. So I think we, we have to put a little trust in our manager, move forward, vote in favor of this. This is going to get the assistance to, to move from one year to another and have solid numbers. At that point there, we're going to be looking at other people as an acting assessor. I think this town manager has come out with those other plans. So I think moving forward, we have a lot to do. I have all the faith in the world that we have the right council. I have all the faith in the world that we have the right council, the right manager to tackle these issues, and the right people that are being sought out for by the manager, and I think that it's going to be in the council's lap pretty quickly. I think we have to, we have to trust him to continuously move that agenda.
So if I may continue, I support this. I'm going to support this whole highly tonight. It's like you say, it's the beginning of this. What concerns me is when we start the budget, and shortly, we'll be starting the budget for next year, is if we're going to have those accurate numbers, like capital numbers. I mean, for months and months, we've heard Counselor Marquetti talk about not getting accurate accounting of the capital, for instance. So do you foresee that we'll have all that, at least where we can make a sound judgment when it comes to budgets, especially like capital reserves and all those kinds of things?
Yes, thank you. Just as one point of clarification, we, the council, because I did attend those meetings, did not vote to have an audit back then. It was a vote to obtain assistance from the Division of Local Services to do a financial analysis of the finance department. So that was not an audit. So there was, because we do have already on the books an audit prepared to happen. So we have a bunch of different categories we're going down with. You are absolutely right that in order for, I'm already looking at capital budgets for next year now. First weekend, where we're going, what do we have? We have road projects that I've worked with DPW Rich Benoit with that say, hey, if we want to do these road projects, where do we have the money? What are we looking? We're looking to put all that data together. So it is important for us to gather that data, and that is why, in order for our accountant to begin to look at what monies we have and provide that to the council and to me as town manager to present plans, she needs to close out the books. So we start rolling from FY '23 closed to FY '24. We have a clean set of books. We're able to look at those spreadsheets that Karen kind of worked on, and also included in this assistance is going to be looking at our chart of accounts and making recommendations about how we can better streamline the finance department and our accounting. And yes, we are working very diligently to get those numbers so that we can make plans for capital planning, road projects, fire station projects, the whole host of projects. It is important because it is frustrating not to be able to go and just get a number right away, but there are reasons for that, and that's why we seek this technical assistance to make sure we have a clean house to start with and move forward, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Town Manager.
Mr. Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Counsel Shania does bring up an interesting point here. We have been paying Roselli and Clark for three years now to do an audit. I realize this is not an audit, but we paid them 37.5 last year. We paid them an additional 39 plus $5,000 this year, and we'll be paying them another $40,000 next year. So my only question is, they do an audit, but I guess I don't really know what the audit covers. Having never seen an RFP for these audits, what do they cover if they don't cover this?
Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. So they come in and audit our balance sheets, what the accountant prepares for them, what our finance director prepares for them, and make sure that all that, our books are in order, our bank accounts are in order, and they provide a management letter that says you need to work on fixing these certain items. I have looked at the management letter from last year on certain accounts. There were some school accounts and the like. So, and you are required to have an audit by Mass General Law. In regards to the RFP, I've been looking to see what the RFP was. I've been trying to find it for audit services. Under mass procurement, audit services and accounting services are exempt from an RFP process, so you do not have to have an RFP process to do that. So we may look at, we're in the three-year audit based on best practices from the Division of Local Services. They suggest you keep your audit informed for at least five years to have a good history of that, and then seek certain services. So we are going into, I think, the second, they just completed the second year, and they'll be doing FY '24, is what their current contract says. So we'll take a look at that audit, and I'll gladly share that management letter with you because typically, I know in the past, managers have shared that with us as counselors, that this is the management letter, these are some of the things that have to be worked on to instill your bond rating so when we go out for borrowing. So it is something to wrap ourselves around with and provide to you sound data.
All right, thank you. I mean, I intend to support this as well. I just was wondering, we're paying them a lot of money every year for an audit. It seems to me they ought to.
I think everybody got to keep in mind, this is not an audit, and I let the discussion go towards the audit so counselors would further understand that the next step is going to be that. But I think what's in front of us right now, which created a difficulty, was closing out one year and then starting up for the next year, which created monies laying around where we did not know where they were. And I think that this is all part of a puzzle, one bite at a time, we're going to move forward on it. And again, it's strictly closing out one year, moving into the next. Any further discussion? If not, all's in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present. Moving on to Counselors' Forum. Counsel Rivas.
Thank you, through you. So I wanted to share with everyone, we have our second Henry Street Resource Fair and Family Day put on by the Southbridge Community Connections and the Recreation Department. Our first event last year went really well. This is part of an ongoing effort to bring more events into that area of the community. So the event will be from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Henry Street Field. Again, in a similar format as last year, there will be food, prizes, lots of information from different organizations, and, you know, families are invited. It will be this Friday, September 15th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Henry Street Field, and the theme will coincide with the start of Hispanic Heritage Month, which begins on Friday, the 15th, and goes through October 15th. This afternoon, we had a community listening session, again, in collaboration with UENK's Family Resource Center and school committee member Carla de la Cruz Davila, who was just here. So in the spirit of some of the community listening sessions that school committee member Andrew Murch had started before the pandemic, we wanted to be out in the community and talk to families, kind of give them different opportunities. We know that coming into the town hall and speaking on camera can be intimidating for a lot of different people, so we wanted to offer different opportunities. This afternoon, we had a really great conversation. We had some of the district staff members who attended, and the student support director did provide the food and refreshments and childcare for families. So we want to, you know, kind of commend the school district for providing that resource. Again, it is the beginning of conversations that we want to have with families. If you miss this time around, we will be having other listening sessions, again, for families, students, staff members can also attend, and just, we want people to share their experiences. We want, you know, we want information that isn't sort of third or fourth hand. We want families and people to come in and talk to us about their experiences, good and bad, that they've had within our school district. We had a lot of great conversations today. Some other providers from the community were there, and we're hoping to have those on an ongoing basis, monthly, in different locations throughout the community. Certainly, members of the council and school committee are invited. Again, it is a listening session, so it is more about the community speaking to us and us taking notes rather than a bunch of talking heads and officials talking. So we hope to hear from people. The next session will be a hybrid session so that some of the families that weren't able to attend today will be able to join us at that session. I also wanted to give a quick update on the WRTA Advisory Board, which I am the representative, and I know Town Manager Jovan will be meeting with the new administrator that we voted in in July, Joshua Rickman. In June, we also voted to continue the fare-free status, to continue for another year. We hope to find funding to continue to provide free fares for our residents who utilize the WRTA buses around town. I do see a lot of people taking them in the morning when I'm going to work, when they, you know, they are getting on the bus to head to work in different places. So it is something that we want to continue supporting. And yeah, I think I also wanted to congratulate the boxer, who we honored last year during this time, on his retirement. I missed the celebration on Friday, but I just wanted to shout out to him and congratulate him. Thank you.
Counsel Dow.
That's a good start, thank you.
Counsel Shania.
Yes, I'd just like to remind the community that this coming Saturday is the Autumn Fest that's taking place at the Common, and it's going to be from 10 till 5 p.m., I believe. So if everybody can find the time to go, it would be great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you very much. It's been great to see the town manager, Jack Jovan, seated up here. It's great to see everybody putting Southbridge first. I usually like to give kudos to the police when I can, but I have to say, the rest of public safety, which I include DPW as public safety because our roads keep us safe, and so do our sidewalks. They've done a great job, shorthand of the DPW, getting everything ready for the fall. I'm very excited to see the town manager's grand vision come together for all the different things he mentioned tonight, but definitely with DPW getting fully staffed before the winter, they've got my full support here moving forward to get the job done. And the fire station, I have to give a lot of kudos to the EMS services. While I've had some good personal experience with them lately myself, I've got some phone calls this weekend from other families that have had great experiences. Even someone, an older family couple didn't know what was going on, and they called the fire, and they found that it was just some faulty smoke detectors in the basement, and they took care of that. And, you know, it's just great to see that Southbridge is working together on all cylinders, Southbridge first. And I know that if we can do this for a few years, two, three, four, five years, we'll all be able to come back when we're old and gray and say, "Southbridge, same as it ever was, all-American city." Thank you very much.
Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to the manager. Should I contact you or peg regarding Zoom information, the invitation?
I'll send it to you.
All right. Very good. And also, I'd like to offer my congratulations to Mr. Manager, I almost said Counselor, Mr. Manager Jovan, for coming on board and volunteering to, well, not volunteering, I think it's more of a mission that he has in his heart to take care of Southbridge and to do well by the town. I also thank his family for allowing him to do the good work for Southbridge, excuse me, that I know he's going to do. So I'm very pleased to see that Jack is up here. I won't be able to make the 16th. My daughter is having her first child, and there's a family event that day, so please, you know, accept my apologies, but I won't be able to be there that evening. But I encourage citizens in town to show up to the town club that evening and to speak with Jack. He's very pleasant to speak with. He truly listens, and he remembers everything. So please, you know, make a point of coming by to see him and introducing yourself, and that's all I have.
Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, due to all the rain we've had recently, a lot of, some constituents have been contacting me and asked that we have some kind of a alert system on the town website concerning flooding around town. I'm not even sure how that would work, but they are, they have been asking that, they're not aware when there's flooding, they're getting the information on Facebook, so they would just like to see if something could be put on the town's website concerning areas in town that are flooded. Also, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I'm glad you mentioned the Mill Street and Cross Street problem that they're having. I went by the other day, and I thought they were going to put a fence around Mill Street, but I haven't seen one put up yet. And also on Cross Street, I thought the building, the building inspector said that that place was going to be taken down within like seven to 10 days, but it's still, it's still up. So just, get an update on that, I would appreciate it. And finally, I too am looking forward to Autumn Fest, the Saturdays. It's a great time, good music, good food, lot of booths, craft fair for all the kids. And I will be there, and I'll probably come to your meet and greet as well. And congratulations, Jack.
Hope you come to my booth and buy some popcorn.
Absolutely. Thank you. That's all I have.
Just a quick note on that, the Blight, the Blight Properties did go out to bid on that Cross Street project, and I think, matter of fact, it's in the shoe right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Mike Julian was on vacation. He just got back today, and they came in while he was on vacation.
Okay, moving on to discussion the next meeting, next meeting day. Vice Chair.
The next meeting is Monday, September 21st, 25th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chamber.
Agenda item number 15, voted enter into executive session. A, pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, 21, A2, to conduct a strategy session for the preparation of negotiations with the non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Very much. Show move. Second. Second. No call.
Excuse me. Counsel Shania.
Yes.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Lazo.
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti.
Yes.
Counsel Montigny.
Yes.
Counsel Rivas.
Yes.
Will join into executive session.